Let the record show at 6 o'clock, we call our meeting to order. Sarah, we do the roll call.
Jim Whitaker.
Here.
Linda Barnhart.
Present.
Eric Goff.
Here.
McKenna Norton.
Present.
Tim Lewis.
Present.
Daniel Gant. Michael Bush.
Present.
Ronald Truitt.
Present.
Okay, we do have a quorum. We have Mr. Bush is on the phone here. We have approval of the agenda to start out with. And I think due to the volume of people in the room this evening, I think what we'll do is rearrange the agenda a little bit and take staff counsel action motion for Dollar General, which is item number nine, to the first part of the meeting right after the meeting minutes.
I move to approve that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. --
I'm sorry.
I don't have a microphone. We're going to rearrange the agenda to where we move item number nine up to right before the public hearings start, after the meeting minutes are approved. I have a motion by Mr. Goff and a second by Mr. Truitt to make that happen. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will proceed that way. We'll have the approval of the sunshine law. Does anybody have anything that they wish to speak under the sunshine law? We're not at that point yet. We're speaking under the sunshine law right now. Let the record show that there is no one to speak under the sunshine law. Approval of the meeting minutes. Huh?
Already did that.
No, we didn't.
Not the meeting minutes.
Not the meeting minutes.
We're not going to adjust the agenda?
Yeah, we already did that.
Okay.
Move to approve the minutes.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Lewis to approve the meeting minutes as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. Okay, now, we have moved the item number nine up to where we will now speak to that particular project.
Okay, so before I read the staff report, like, as you know, we set the agendas on Wednesday and we can amend the agendas on, at noon on Thursday if need be. Around 2:00 on Thursday, there were talks about Dollar General requesting to be removed from the agenda, which we could not do. On Friday at 2:00, we got a letter that I've given to all of you, basically requesting that it be tabled. So before we go forward, I guess we're looking for some type of decision from the commission in regards to whether or not you want to just table this matter or if you want to continue with hearing the staff report and such tonight.
I think it would be to best advantage to continue with the staff report.
So this is a staff report for request for sketch plan advancement.
Sorry, are we interrupting?
The entrance in the back. So this is a staff report for request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Dollar General Arden. The file's 2310-341. And the developer is Wall Street Partners WV2 LLC. The engineer is The Thrasher Group. The project's located in the Jaredstown District, tax map 21, parcel 22.4. The site's located on Arden-Nolville Road, approximately 0.3 miles north of the intersection of Pitters Chapel Road and Arden-Nolville Road. The developer is proposing a 10,640 square foot Dollar General on 2.33 acres to be served by private well and septic. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On December 19th, 2023, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. On January 16th, 2024, the planning commission voted to table the proposed sketch plan to allow staff to review the historic district items presented during the public hearing. After further research, staff has determined that the proposed Dollar General is located within the Ridge Road Historic District. Attached is a letter from the deputy state historic preservation officer, Susan Pierce, stating that the proposed Dollar General would have an adverse effect on the historic district and adversely affect the view shed of the architectural resources that contribute to the historic district. The letter recommends the consideration of alternatives or modifications to the proposed project to avoid, minimize, or mitigate the adverse effects on the historic resources. The developer has not proposed any alternatives or modifications at this time. The Berkeley County Historic Landmarks Commission has also provided a letter in agreement with the deputy state historic preservation officer and in opposition of the proposed Dollar General. In addition, the National Trust for Historic Preservation provided a letter in opposition to the proposed Dollar General based on the significance of the Ridge Road Historic District as an irreplaceable cultural resource. One of the various elements of the Berkeley County Comprehensive Plan is the preservation of the county's agricultural lands, open spaces, and sensitive environmental resources to all the continued enjoyment of the area's recreational opportunities, scenic landscapes, and sensitive flora and fauna. The growth management map shows the location of the proposed Dollar General as being in a rural, low-density residential area. Based on the information presented above, staff feels that the proposed Dollar General would adversely affect the Ridge Road Historic District and recommends denial of the sketch plan.
Do we have anyone to represent the project? Do we have anyone to represent the project? You're speaking for the project? Okay.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Cox. I'm with Bowles Rice. I represent the applicant. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. As you heard, we were a bit late in requesting a modification to the agenda, but we would respectfully request that you table this project, table this decision for two reasons. First reason is the applicant is in the process of attempting to acquire a completely different site that would alleviate this entire problem. And then second, as was suggested by the state historic preservation office, the feedback from the community at large, Berkeley County Historic Landmarks Commission, they're also evaluating modifications to the project that may be more palatable to the community if the alternate site doesn't work. So given that, we would respectfully request that you table this.
Well, we have a staff recommendation to deny it. It's up to the commission whether you want to table it. And if we table it, it would come back under a whole different site plan, wouldn't it?
Not exactly. If it would stay at this site. Goes to another site. And this sketch plan is pretty much withdrawn and it's a brand new sketch plan application. Have a brand new.
Mission members, you hear what's being said. Do you have questions of Mr. Cox? Or do you have questions of the staff?
I have a question. If we table it and they come back and say that they want to move to an alternate site, we have to bring this back before in order to have it removed from being tabled.
I think that's the applicant's request for withdrawal of the sketch plan application.
I make a motion that we accept Mr. Cox's request to table the conversation until a later date. Don't want to pick a date because June 15th is two weeks away. He may need more time to.
My question would be how much time they need.
I wish I had a better answer to exactly whether that would look like. I think August, if that is okay with you. The commission, that August would be a safe planning factor for us to figure out whether we.
Also, we should be respectful of all the public who are here and let them know what the date would be also, rather than to leave them hanging.
I think August.
Madam President.
Mr. Bush, go ahead.
This is Mike Bush.
Yes.
Generally and overall, I am skeptical of the applicant's ability to address my concerns related to the project compliance with the comprehensive plan. Because a redraw of the site is ignoring many of the issues that had already been discussed at the prior meeting and public hearing. However, I would have no opposition to the applicant's request to table the matter additions. One being that the record reflects that, of course, it's tabled at the request of the applicant. So it has been untabled by the planning commission and tabled at the request of the applicant. Second, that there be no time limitation as the commission would otherwise be subject to time limitations for matters that are tabled. And third, I would request that the matter be untabled at the discretion of the planning commission in the event that the sketch plan comes back quite different from the original sketch plan presented. My belief is that there would need to be a fresh public hearing on the sketch plan as presented and would ultimately be voted upon.
Quite a mouthful, Mr. Bush. Well, keeping in mind, commission members, before we, I don't have a second on the table, but keeping in mind the staff report, which has reviewed the project thoroughly more than once. I kind of feel, and I don't know, Mr. Legal, I have to ask you. I kind of feel that we would be better off to deny it based on what the staff report is.
Not really.
President, if I may, offer a couple other items for consideration before there's a vote on table and you're not tabling. Guess I would offer, that's exactly what, these are the exact recommendations that were provided by the Historic Landmarks Commission and the West Virginia Agency. This is exactly what was recommended. The applicant is simply trying to comply with that in a reasonable fashion and asking you to table it, at which time you can fully, you can fully hear it. And if the applicant needs to make that request to untable it, the applicant is more than happy to do that.
I personally don't like anything tabled for any length of time. And it's already been several months since we've not discussed this project. Let's, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second to table the project at the request of the applicant? Hey, the motion dies for lack of second. All right, then, I'm looking for a motion to accept a staff recommendation. That's our two options, right?
A move that we accept staff recommendation and deny the sketch plan.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. -- a motion by Mr. Whitaker. Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Whitaker, I'm sorry, to accept the staff recommendation and that is to deny the project. And at that time, then, you can decide what you want to do. Are there any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, let the record show that there's one no by Mr. Bush. Motion passes.
No, ma'am. No, Madam President, I'm in support of the motion.
Oh, okay.
To deny.
It's just a delay.
It's just time delay.
Okay, okay. Delayed reaction, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, we don't need that. We have business to discuss. I realize you're all very happy, but please give us that respect of carrying on. Thank you. Now, we'll start with our public hearings.
Yes, this is a public hearing for request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Marlo Ice Cream Shop, filed 2404-104. The developer is the Happy Cow Ice Cream and Treats LLC and the engineer is CEC Inc. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map 7, parcel 108.1. The site's located directly south of the Williamsport Pike and Broad Lane intersection. The developer is proposing a 1,000-square-foot ice cream shop on 1.15 acres to be served by public water and private septic. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On May 29th, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent Marlo Ice Cream Shop?
Yes, my name is Lane Tobin. I'm here with CEC as the engineer record.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to make your questions or comments known regarding this project. We would ask that you come forward, state your name, your address, and any questions you might have.
If there are none, I move to close the public hearing.
Let the record show that there is no comments. I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing, second by Mr. Truitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Tobin or of the staff?
If there are no questions, I make a motion to accept staff recommendations for advancement of the sketch plans to the preliminary plan stage.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation and that is to advance the project forward. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion passes. Okay, the next public hearing is Restolium Truck Docks.
Yes, this is a public hearing for request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Restolium Truck Docks, filed 2404-106. The developer is Berkeley Business Park Associates and the engineer is Greenway Engineering. It's located in the Apeken District, tax map 6, parcel 68, and is located at 1061 Auto Parts Place within the Berkeley Business Park. The developer is proposing a modification of the existing loading dock area and railroad spur. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On May 29th, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, Ryan Shaw with the developer.
David McLean with Greenway Engineering.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Your opportunity to make your comments known. Please come forward, state your name, your address, and any comments you might have regarding the Restolium Truck Docks.
There is no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Whitaker to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning commission members, how about you? Do you have questions of Mr. Shaw or of Ms. McLean?
If there are no questions, I make a recommendation, or make a motion, we accept staff recommendation for advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation that is to advance the project forward to the preliminary plan stage. Is there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Project passes, thank you. Okay, that concludes our public hearings. Now, we have preliminary plan approval. Meadow Crest.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Meadow Crest, filed 2312-397. The developer is Panhandle Homes and the engineer is Foxon Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map 17, parcel 12, and is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Beddington Road and Davis Drive. This project proposes 25 single-family detached lots and four single-family attached lots on 9.64 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the October 16th, 2023, Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 801, Table 8-1A8, requiring two parking spaces on-site and one parking space off-site for single-family attached dwellings. On April 19th, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends advancement of the preliminary plan to the final plat stage.
Do we have anyone to represent Meadow Crest?
Good evening, Steve Sianovich with Foxon Associates, representing the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Planning commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich?
If there are no questions, I make a motion to accept staff recommendations for advancement of the preliminary plan to the final plat stage.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, the next one is Marlo Solar.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Marlo Solar, filed 2403-077. The developer is First Energy and the engineer is Burns McDonald. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map 7, parcel 186. The site's located on Williamsport Pike, approximately 0.70 miles south of the intersection of Williamsport Pike and Ripple Way. The developer is proposing a solar generation station on approximately 296 acres with the limit of disturbance for the solar generating station being 33 acres. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On June 18th, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent Marlo Solar?
What do you need, Caleb Paul, from First Energy?
Listen to Sandra from First Energy.
Thank you. Planning commission members, do you have questions of these two applicants or of the staff? How, what are you going to do with the remainder of the project, of the property? 296 acres and utilizing 33? No plans?
No other questions, I make a motion we accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary plan.
A motion by Mr. Lewis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Truitt to accept staff recommendation and that is to grant preliminary plan approval. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Project passes, thank you. The next item for preliminary plan approval is Lightdale Apartments.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Lightdale Apartments, filed 2312-396. The developer is HWA Enterprises and the engineer is Valley Engineering. It's located in the Apeken District, tax map 6M, parcel 31. The site's located at the intersection of Williamsport Pike and Rudolph Court, approximately 570 feet south of the Berkeley Station Road and Williamsport Pike intersection. This project proposes an apartment complex with 72 units on approximately 3.6 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the June 5th, 2023, Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 801, Table 8-1A7, requiring 2.5 parking spaces per apartment unit plus one parking space per on-site employee plus 10% for additional guests. On June 25th, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project with subdivision ordinance or project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan.
Do we have anyone to represent the project, Lightdale Apartments?
Ken O'Donoghue with Valley Engineering, if you have any questions.
I'm sorry, catch your name again.
Kent O'Donohue.
Thank you. Thinking commission, you have questions of Mr. McDyew or of the staff?
Only question I have. I'll say it again, but I know it's not written in the ordinance, Doug, but we're going with apartments. And we're doing a parking lot. Is there anything that we're going to engineer that showed charging stations for electric cars that were, our government seems to be pushing on us now?
Since these are all apartments and not single-family homes, that's why I said. Yeah, and William Akins, the developer, he could have, he could have probably given you an answer on that. I do not know the answer to that specifically. But he actually got stuck in that accident I barely got through. So, so he wanted to be here, but the... I will tell you though, just a little bit from experience on that, if they do decide to do that, then it's just a matter of getting... It does take a lot of power to do those, so they'll just have to get a little bit, they'll have to work with the power company to get probably a bigger transformer box added and all that. And the lines ran to whatever spots they want to put them. But it's not a trouble to do it if they decide to do it, but...
Big cost.
Yeah, it would be. But, I mean, I feel like a lot of people are finding a benefit of doing it. There's, there is a demand there for it depending on your clientele. And so he'll assess that on whether or not he thinks that his burners are...
I'm just looking for stubs most of the time at this point.
Any additional questions, comments?
If there are no other questions, I make a motion we accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation and that is to approve the preliminary plan for Lightdale Apartments. Are there any more additional questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, the next item for preliminary plan approval is Tractor Supply Enwood.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Tractor Supply Enwood, filed 2404-090. The developer is Reese Real Estate Development and the engineer is SE3 LLC. It's located in the Milk Creek District, tax map 6K, parcel 17. The site's located southeast of the intersection of Jaredstown Road and Winchester Avenue, just west of the intersection of Seffronia Boulevard and Jaredstown Road. west of the intersection of Sephora Boulevard and Jaredstown Road. The developer's proposing a 21,930 square foot tractor supply store on 5.17 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On June 25th, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Keith Carter, President, Reese Real Estate Development Company.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Carter or of the staff?
There are no questions, I make a motion, we accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation and that is to approve the preliminary plan for Tractor Supply Enwood. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving on to final plat determination, Estates of Tuscarora.
This is a request for final plat determination. The project Estates Tuscarora Phase 2, lots 8 through 24 and 26. The file is 2310-332. The developer is Thatcher Holdings LLC and the surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Hedgesville District, Tax Map 40, Parcells 2 and 4. The site's located on the right side of Thatcher Road, approximately 500 feet north of the intersection with Tuscarora Pike. The final plat proposes the development of 18 single-family lots on approximately 39.5 acres to be served by private well and septic. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On June 13th, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 5th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, Mike Roberts, Representative Project.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts or of the staff? If there are no questions, can I have a motion?
Make a motion, we accept staff recommendations for final plat determination and advertising of public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 5th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation and that is to hold a public hearing, at which time the final plat could be approved August 5, 2024. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next project is Middle Creek Vista's.
This is a request for final plat determination. The project is Middle Creek Vista's Phase 1, Section 3, lots 10 through 13 and 33 through 36. The file is 2206-154. The developer is Warfield Homes, Inc., and the engineer is Morris and Ritchie Associates. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 21A, Parcel 106. The project's located approximately 2,500 feet south of the intersection of Sailor's Way and Strobridge Road, with Middle Creek running through the middle of the site. The developer's proposing eight single-family lots on approximately 1.63 acres to be served by public water and sewer. On April 20th, 2020, the developer was granted a waiver to Article 5, Section C2 of the Berkeley County Stormwater Management Ordinance 2016, which requires stormwater management quantity control. On July 21st, 2022, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 5th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening, I'm Madeline Delaney, Project Manager and Representative for the developer Warfield Homes.
Thank you very much. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of the applicant's representative or of the staff?
There are no questions, I make a rec, make a motion, we accept staff recommendations for final plat determination and advertising of public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 5th, 2024, Warfield Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation and that is to conduct a public hearing, at which time the final plat will be approved. Thank you. And that public hearing is August 5th, 2024. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, since we moved item nine up, is there anything that the Planning Commission wishes to speak of?
Yeah. Eddie?
Thank you.
August, August the first.
Just to give us a sound, we have a meeting set up on... Try to talk about how... It's like...
Has, since it got approved last Thursday, has it been submitted to different agencies, school board, I mean?
I'm still waiting, I don't know if it was signed by the county.
It goes to the clerk.
It takes to the clerk, but normally what happens is we wait for Penny to obtain everybody's signature. And we take it and report it. I don't know if everybody's signed the decree yet. But would be...
Yeah, I don't think we've...
Okay.
Come across my...
But I'll work, we'll work with Penny. I didn't email her today because I figured it was Monday, Thursday, it wasn't done Friday, but...
Can we make...
Well, it'll be this Thursday, but next.
Can someone make sure that it does get recorded?
Yes, ma'am.
Because there has been...
That was a discussion at the...
Yeah, I'm sure it was.
But we've been making people...
Have you done? Yeah, you just, you mean like that. Okay, if there's nothing else to...
I just have one question.
Yes, yes.
I just want to make sure that I'm good with myself on this. You know, on the Dollar General, they requested that to be tabled. We tabled it in January, we tabled it because there was a lot of questions about the historic district. They also had the opportunity to go back and review that, right? And they were coming back saying we were making changes, whether it's just physical or looking at other sites.
Also background, Anthony and I met with Rice, developer, on the 11th. Asked that it be... They actually asked that it be 17th, asked them to write a staff report and get all our documentation together. This wasn't a surprise, they had three weeks.
They did quite some, which it wasn't their fault to first look. Historic district, actual area of the historic... They had to go to the parks, and then the right, once that guy outed.
When we got notification from the art and cultural history, that came to the county. Did we forward that to...
We sent, and we sent, and during the sketch plan, bring a sketch plan, things, we... The historical district popped up. It does pop up, it says there's something there.
Well, it popped up on the federal register, not SHIBO. So they reached out to SHIBO, and then it would rematch to be accurate because what was the national register would have...
Yes, they were providing all of this...
And the...
They knew that.
They obtained it.
They met with, I think, the... They were involved the whole time, and it was, they had their request that we... Quest from the... Provide us further information, saying that they did everything right. We got back, wasn't anything from them, it was from other agencies. Before they came to you, we forced them, they restored. Is this okay or not? They came back with a letter that they weren't sure where it was, that they didn't write it, and eventually done, not on there, but fair enough, what the writer, it was obvious that...
I've always been against the project, but I just wanted to make sure that we were not setting ourselves up to...
Well, I personally...
The thing about it is, is for them to comply, I think we're this all...
Madam, Madam President.
Yes. Mr. Bush, go ahead.
Madam President, this, yeah, this is my question, just because it's still, of course, a matter of public record, you know, the project, in my opinion, the Dollar General project, was denied at the sketch plan phase for many reasons, of which the historical aspect was one. So I just, I wanted to be clear for the record that it's, just because of the historical nature of some of the issues was not the only reason that, you know, there were a myriad of other, other issues that popped up in this application. Thank you.
I think we did the right thing...
Yes.
By denying it and then...
Be completely different.
That's exactly, that's exactly right.
You might as well just say start the clock.
Yeah. Reset.
Yeah. Putting...
Because you're gonna have to give all these people time, for all the days, the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we made the right decision by denying it, following our staff's recommendation, and then it now will, like you said, the clock will start again. If they decide they want to modify it, then they'll have to come back and modify it. It probably would have to have a public hearing if they make any modifications to it anyhow.
If they move the building...
Yeah.
On their site.
The only other modifications that they were actually discussing were elevation or location change. Location change didn't come till Friday, so, just so you know, our recommendation would have changed because architectural changes wouldn't really move the project out of its location.
Right. It would be started over because something...
Got started over anyways.
Right. Yeah, when I, when I read their, Boz's letter, you know, table it because of, and then, you know, one of the paragraphs has said a possible new location, I went, it's gotta start all over.
Yeah.
By denying it, I think we made the right decision.
I think we did.
I think it's best to do it this way, if they go down the road, play, then these people, they could grasp, you know, it's just better to do...
Well, table and it, it's already been tabled for several months, and to table it again and table it again...
It'll be back.
Yeah, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. I think you did a good job.
I thought I did this intentionally, but when I went on vacation, I went to see the Dollar General headquarters.
Did you though?
The Goddardsville, Tennessee.
Okay, if there's nothing else...
I move to adjourn.
I have a motion by Mr. Goff at 6:44 to adjourn, and second by Mr. Truitt.
All those in favor?
Yep.
Stand up.